Okay. Good evening. I'd like to invite everyone and say thank you for attending our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of June 13th, 2023. If you would join up and standing up and so. Congratulations. Mission members could be started with Kenny, but introduce yourself, please.
Ken Parsons, full member.
Penny Kesler, full member. Kitty Graham.
Bob Bowles.
Paul Chanley, full member.
Beth Cavagna, Director's Planning.
Fancy Bill Dowd, 486.
Bob Legner, member.
Dave McCollum, Land use coordinator.
Okay, so the first item on our agenda is a public hearing for Karen Roche, special permit barn, front yard, and 600, 1,628 square feet, 11 Sunset Hill Road. Penny, would you read the public notice?
Sure. It will appear June 5th and June 9th, 2023, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on June 13th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in Conference Room D of the Municipal Center, 1 School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to hear the following. Corinne Roche, for property located at 11 Sunset Hill Road, for a special permit to construct a 1,628 square foot horse barn within the front yard. The property can be found in the assessor's records as map 54, block 55, and lot 113. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethel.co. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Ken Stevens, chairman.
Okay, yeah, we can all just step up.
I'll do.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, so the right with deal market, so we'll. You see, 158 Deer Avenue and Corinne Roche is going to explain to you the proposal that we have to put a barn next to our house.
Oh, yeah. I would, actually. I'd like to build a one-story barn. It's a 1,006 feet enclosed space with an overhang, and I'd like to put it in the front yard. I understand that I have a corner lot, so I've got two front yards, and that's what this is all about.
You should have with you in the application a copy of the.
Oh, I need that.
Copy of the floor class.
Yeah, and this is what it's gonna look like.
Kitty, can I just explain before they go into the detail of what it's gonna look like? So a special permit is needed for two reasons. One is, under special permit, if your barn is gonna exceed 1,200 square feet, you have to get a special permit from the commission. The second part is pertaining to, we've run into this situation before, like Corinne said, they have a corner lot, so she has two front yards. The barn is gonna be in one of the front yards. If the structure wants to be in the front yard, it has to get a special permit.
We've been before the zoning board of appeals, which has given a variance, again, based on the uniqueness of the lot and the fact that she has two front yards. Do you want copies of this on your files?
The variance is already in the file, and it's recorded in the land records, volume 1, 168, page 708.
As you'll see that from the information that's been submitted, the obviously, since we're the corner lot, as we referred to, you got Sunset Hill is basically on the side of the house and then or wait, excuse me, Sunset Hill outside of the house and then Patty's Lane, both have an existing driveway that come in to the front of the house. And the barn is actually being placed in a corner, but the corner is, of course, in the front yard, long and pat, Patty's Lane. So that's the purpose of the special permit. The dimensions of the barn are set out. You've got the schematic drawing of whatever looks like the diagram, better picture, the supplement is submitted as an architectural drawing. It's simple. How many horses were old?
Three.
Three, three stalls and.
Four stalls. Yeah, it's interesting.
So as a total support stall barn, set up for three horses. And that's about it. I mean, it's in terms of facilities, you will have electric and water.
Yes.
And that's about it.
Health department.
Yeah, been through.
So it's been through the health department.
Yes, it has, and the engineering department.
So that's the simple proposal. And I'm happy to answer any questions. You're actually, we answer any questions.
First, we're going to go to the public. Okay.
All right.
What?
I know.
You never know.
The letters.
How many of your neighbors might have shown up, want to talk? Okay, it's time for the public. Would anybody like to have any questions about this application?
Well, I would like to make some comments.
Would you? You have to come up to the front so we can get you on.
Yeah, be recorded. How far up? I have a.
In front of Neil.
I live in Greenwich, 6 Amp Patty's Lane West. Don and I have been living on Amp Patty's Lane since the 1970s, before Amp Patty's Lane was 50 feet wide. And when Warren and Eileen Brown moved out of their house after the death of both of them, we, they, they lived there and they had horses. They had a donkey named Daisy. They had a horse. They had horses. They had a other animals, Clover, the wonderful animal. And when they left, they were such wonderful stewards of the property. We were really hoping that somebody would move in who would also be wonderful stewards of the property because it was absolutely a gorgeous piece of property. Corinne and Zach moved in and they took down all of these trees that were so old and falling down. And I don't know if you've been out there to see the site. They, they took down these very old pine trees and they built this wonderful field where Warren, at one time, he was a, an engineer for Sikorsky. And sometimes helicopters would come and land in that field to pick him up and bring him back to Sikorsky. And it was just a wonderful experience having this couple live there. And I was so delighted that these people came and lived there and the work that they have done and spent copious amounts of money, sweat equity included, to Warren and Eileen would be so proud of, of the work that these folks have done. This young couple have worked so hard on this property. I am just so proud of the work that you have done on this. And so Don and I wholeheartedly support this application and we look forward to the what this barn being built and the work that's going to be done on this property.
Thank you.
Go up, please.
Unsolicited.
Would there be any one else you'd like to come forward?
Don, Greenwich, 6 Amp Patty's Lane West. I would just want to add that they do plan on having animals on the property. It would be nice to see the animals there again. It's a beautiful piece for animals. As I say, there were horses, there were goats, there were, you know, numerous. There were sheep they had, the Browns had. And so we just kind of go with the property. It's a beautiful piece for, you know, the meadow they've created because they've cut down trees. And he also built a beautiful fence to enclose so the horses can live there safely. So I really think it'll be a great addition, a great addition to keeping the legacy going of this piece of property on Sunset Hill. That's nice.
Okay, I'll just add to that. I'm Corinne Walker, and I'm at 9 Amp Patty's Lane West. So I'm your neighbor.
Hello, nice to meet you.
I was so excited because I grew up with horses and I, I miss the smell of horses and I miss the essence of hay and the calmness of animals being present in nature. One of the things that I, I think Don and Eileen was an assumption made, but these ecological people, after cutting down and clearing the trees, they made the fencing out of the trees. So I watched as I go to work daily, this property growing out of itself. And I felt that it was people that would take care of, be caretakers. And I know that the previous people were caretakers of the Golden Trail, which is the property right behind that, which has swamp lands and beaver dance and things like, like such. But yeah, I was excited for that, too, to also be a neighbor that is a horse-loving neighbor who grew up with the animals. And I was so excited that you're moving in. I just haven't been able to come down and meet you yet. And tell you, I just wanted to throw in the recycled fencing from the tree. And that was the sweat that these two were referring to, that they kind of made an assumption that, that you knew about.
Thank you.
Corinne, can you spell your last name?
Walker. Like Walker. Got it. Thank you. I also might want to point out that whatever front lawn is used, it's on the corner. So it's a perfect pick for where the property is. It's not really going to disturb anyone, and I can envision it on the corner when we come around it, actually.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything to say? I don't know who else, but excuse me, mission members. Wait, did you, do you want to comment on anything? I'm sorry, now. I don't think you have to really, right? It's been done well. Okay, commission members. Mr. Legner.
I'm glad to see somebody returning that, you know, a piece of property to, you know, a good use or putting it to a good use in a country way. Those barns make good, visible, it'll be seen from the road, I'm sure. So it makes a good look to, to a country road. Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, who could object to this?
Yeah. Thank you, Dan. Penny.
I've got nothing. It sounds wonderful.
Paul. Kitty Graham? No question. Thank you for moving into our neighborhood.
Thanks for having us.
Uh, no?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, so I think we're going to close this. You're right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. And some advice, we're excited on the agenda.
Next holder in front of your kid.
Yeah, I see. Thank you. Which is. So the next item on our agenda is East Station Place. Site plan, special permit, 14 units excavation and fill, 61 South Street. No, we still have to open it.
To appear May 12th and May 19th, 2023, public notice. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on May 23rd, 2023.
Yeah, May, yeah. Now. Well, we didn't.
All right, to hear, in Conference Room D of the Municipal Center, 1 School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to hear the following. JAR associates for property located at 185 Grassy Plains Street, for a site plan and special permit to construct 175, I'm getting this right, 175,000 square foot and 15,000 square foot building and associated amenities in the IP zone. The property can be found in the assessor's records as map 10 block 23 and lot 51. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments by regular mail and email to landuse@bethel.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building.
Okay, this hearing is now opened and will be continued on June 27th, 2023.
I'm sorry, the notice that was just read was for JAR, which is not being continued.
I'm sorry. Did we read the wrong one?
Yeah. Hold on. You read the right one, but we're in a different order.
Well, East Station, the one that was.
East Station, East Station Place, 81 South.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's not.
So I wasn't paying, I just picked the one that was on top.
Okay, East Station.
East Station Place. I'm sorry, the wrong, we read the wrong legal notice, too. Thank you, so much.
All right, disregard previous legal notice.
New legal notice.
New legal notice. To appear June 5th and 9th, 2023. The Bethel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on June 13th, 2023, at 7:00 PM in Conference Room D of the Municipal Center, 1 School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, to hear the following. East Station Place for property located at 61 South Street for a site plan, VC TOT overlay, and a special permit for excavation and fill activities. The property can be found in the clerk's records as file 28 map 163. A link to review the materials can be found on the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethel.gov. Parking for hearing is located to the rear of the building. Ken Stevens, chairman. Thank you.
Now.
61 South Street. We've had some notice and referral issues, so we'd like you to continue that to your next.
We have here, we continue at 627.
Yes.
That is correct. Okay. So now we have public hearings continue. JAR associates, 185 Grassy Plains Street, site plan, special permit.
Before we start, I'm going to review myself for this application.
Okay, Paul. Thank you.
This was open at the last meeting of the commission.
Right.
My name is Peter Olson. I'm an attorney with an office here in Bethel at 275 Greenwood Avenue. My firm name is Land Use and Conservation Council. Here tonight on behalf of JAR Associates LLC, the owner of the property of 185 Grassy Plain Street, and JAR is represented here by Anthony Rizzo Jr. This building is the former Burney Building, which is the first building you see as you pull into the Francis Park Industrial Park. Fortunately, there's a bunch of photos that have been sitting in this room for a few months now, and so I grabbed one of them and put it up on the easel.
I know it will.
Burney Building, as you can see, is, is here in this photograph. It's the main grad in the industrial park. Several months ago, we brought to you an application for a 15,000 square foot addition to the building, which would be located right here. And we're in the process of designing building plans for that building. We'll be with construction. The rest of the site, our plan is presented to you tonight is for two buildings, one approximately 75,000 square feet and go in the area of these trees, and one approximately 15,000 square feet that will go here in the entryway. So you will have our engineer go through those locations and the plan in just a moment. The reason we're bringing this application is not that we're ready to put a shovel in the ground to build a building with a tenant, but that we want to be ready to do so. So we want to have an approval in hand, and we want to do site preparation so that when we do talk to somebody who's serious about moving in, we're able to say to them that we have the approvals in place and the site's ready, and we can put a shovel in the ground and have you up and running in. By shortening that time period, it really helps us in the marketplace as opposed to, if you're now where it's two years out to, to be able to do that. So that's the reason we brought the application. It is a site plan and special permit. The special permit is for the size of the buildings. They're more than 1,000 square feet. And also for excavation and fill activities for the site preparation, essentially. When Dynus talks, Dynus Verbickis, our engineer, he's going to talk to you about the plan and he's going to use the words, well, initials, ELUR. And I just wanted to explain what that meant from a legal perspective before you. It stands for environmental land use restriction, and it's a technique that we use when we do environmental remediation, but leave the bad material in place. And so what this is, is when Burney was operating, they would do molding and, and had some casting sand that essentially they trucked out back and dumped. In the picture that you see here, this kind of open field area is where that was. And before Burney sold the property to us, they did environmental remediation overseen by a licensed environmental professional, an LEP, approved by the State Department of Environmental Protection. That was a cap. And essentially, that means they put a membrane over the bad material and put about four feet of fill on top of it and planted some grass. And essentially, we can do a lot of things in that area, even with that in place. But the ELUR says you can't do things like residential housing, various things like that. Our plan is to remove the material and eliminate the ELUR, period. It'll be gone. It won't need anything. And the, the reason is we're putting our detention base in that area, and that would be pretty bad. So our, our plan is to do that. We have an LEP on board who will design what's called a remedial action plan. We'll run it by the DEP as needed. We'll do the work. We'll get sign-ups and all that. But we're not going to do that until we're ready to actually dig and dig down and build this project. So the reason why we did that detail is we have a letter from the health department. My position, as you know, is to help part of the world to see these things. We have an entire statutory regulatory scheme involved in remediation where a licensed environmental protection license, the professional, environmental professional oversees the project with some supervision from DEP to approve the plans they prepare. And we'll go through all that, but it's not something that the health department will receive at all. For that, I'd like to turn, oh, one other thing. The, the plan that we presented for this building has been altered. And we have a rendering of that proposed building here. And the biggest change is that the loading dock is now on the side around, sort of around the back of it, in the front. So we've moved that. Once we get comments from the town's reviewing engineer, we'll prepare an updated plan set, and that will reflect the redesigned building for the loading dock in a different area. So let me have Dynus present the civil engineering plan, and I think we've got Joe Bouskis on Zoom or at least.
Yes, he's there.
Joe's there, and he'll talk a little bit about traffic and the traffic lights there. Thanks.
Good evening. For the record, Dynus Verbickis, professional engineer with our talent engineering room. You're on behalf of the app as well. Then we are the engineering program, prepare the site plan documents I'll be presenting to you today. The initial drawing that I've have before you is a representation, a survey of the property. It's a representation of what currently exists, including the existing building and the parking surround on the, on the site itself. The ELUR area, which is probably the only time I'll mention it. This Peter did a great job explaining it, this right in this vicinity, and that reflects that grass area that Peter had pointed out to folks previously. And the, we had used these plans to make a presentation to the wetland commission. So the plan also highlights the bit of wetland that is located on the property. Property itself is about 20.7 acres in size. The existing building is about 50,000 square feet in size. And we did recently get approval for 15,000 plus minus square foot addition to the west side of the existing building. Flip over the map just to give a little bit of color to it and bring it a little bit to life. So again, existing building, previously approved addition to that building, with some parking that is associated with this addition and the loading spaces also associated with the addition. Our proposal tonight, again, twofold, proposing a smaller 15, 16,000 square foot building in the northern corner, northeastern corner of the property. And then a bit larger building, about 75,000 to 80,000 square, square foot building in the southwestern portion of the property. We propose development will incorporate drive aisles with parking in the front of, of the build, of the bigger building. The thought process here is that the front of the building will face out to Francis Clark Circle, and this is where the office areas might be located in the Francis Clark side. And then working with the topography, we figured the rear or the eastern side of the building would be where the loading would take place and lends itself to allowing loading docks in the back. So we've worked somewhat with the topography to provide areas for loading on this larger building. In addition, because there will likely be employees that access the back, we do have quite a bit of parking proposed in the back of the building as well. And ELUR, second dimension, it's located right about in this vicinity. And we will be removing that in its entirety via plans prepared by an LEP and overseen by the DEP when whatever other regulatory requirements there are. This building, again, on the north end of the site, a little bit smaller in size. We have a small area for parking. And again, we anticipate this being warehousing type use online manufacturing as what, as is what occurs on site currently. So when all is said and done, we figure there will be about 263 parking spaces on the property. Right now, there's about 150 somewhat parking, 168, I think. So we're adding about 95 parking spaces currently in and around the existing building, more than adequate parking for all the uses there. And this being a larger campus, the parking can be shared between all tenants in all of the proposed buildings. Works, works really nicely. Now, oops. Get a little bit into the grading of the property.
Mr. Verbickis, as you're putting the next sheet up on the easel, can you just let me know which one you're referencing to?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
So I, I think what we'd like to do is go to sheet four, please. Be the overall site plan.
I have a 4A, a 4B, and a 4C.
Check, check one above the four. It should be a four, just, excuse me, above 4A should be a four. It's not interesting.
I must, I must be missing it.
I mean, it, it looked like. Yeah, that's.
Come back, come back, come back. There it is.
Okay.
Ta-da. Perfect. Not saying, but. So and I can, I can point in either direction, whichever you prefer. Is it easier to look on the TV screen or?
They seem to feel good over here.
Okay.
I like.
So the property itself. Grassy Plain Street is, would be on the bottom of the sheet. And Francis Clark Circle zips in perpendicular with the right edge of the sheet. And as you come in, Francis Clark Circle, you're rising up in grade. So the property itself rises up. Pretty steeply along Grassy Plain Street. And then once you get. To the existing Bernie building is a former Bernie building, existing building, things level off. And so for all ten purposes, the existing developed area, pretty level. You know, minor shifts and grades are pretty level. Where we are proposing the front. Of the northern building. We're proposing it in an area where grading. Is, is, is a little bit of a challenge. There's about twenty five feet of grade elevation between the road and. The upper level. So the intention here is to. Construct a building that kind of nestles right into that, into that slope. So it's trying not to detract from the existing Bernie building that was. Recently refinished to make it look as it is currently. And now to the south of the existing building. Currently completely undeveloped wooded property and we. Grades rise rather rapidly off the southern edge of the existing parking. Rise up to an elevation that is about fifty feet higher, excuse me, thirty feet higher than. Than the surrounding ground. And in order to place a large flat building, we're going to remove. Some of that, some of that rock. So at the maximum point, we will be taking about thirty feet of material out. So just in this central portion. And of course, the topography, as we have a high point here, the biography rolls off. To the east down towards Francis Clark Circle. So some of this material as we. Jack hammered out or blasted out or, or were taken away, will process some of that material. So if you use it as fill. On site to level off the area here, we will be removing material on the eastern side of the building as well. And again. Because of the elevational changes and what we're proposing, we're going to have about fifty five thousand cubic yards of material. Ultimately, that it's worked on and removed from the site. A lot of it will be part of offsite, yes. That having been said, once we've established a nice level area for the building and parking and loading and such. We'll work in our infrastructure to provide water and sewer to. The larger building as well as to the small building, separate services. And associated with the parking and of course, the building, we're proposing stormwater management systems. Stormwater management systems for the site that have been designed. To facilitate storms of the two, ten, twenty five, fifty and one hundred year storm events. And in each of those cases, we'll be reducing the rate of runoff on the site when compared to existing conditions. As far as the stormwater management systems, we do have a small one proposed. Off the southwestern portion of the larger building. We have some stormwater management systems proposed along the western edge of previously approved plan. As well as in this area, just a little bit to the north of the previously approved addition. For the building that's located in the northern point. We do have a stormwater management system underground. Similar to the others that I pointed out to you. Now manage some of the runoff associated with this building. And then for the bulk of the rest of the site, we do have detention basin that's proposed. Just off the eastern edge of the proposed rear parking for the, for this larger building. Soil testing was conducted in all of the areas where the stormwater management systems are proposed. In the underground systems, all the soils were sandy, percolation rates were. Really quick. So we anticipate that stormwater infiltrating into the ground, which. Working with the, the Wetland Commission. They're happy to know that we're infiltrating that first flush runoff, which is, you know, where contaminants might, like, you know, where, when. The rain starts, the oils float on the surface of the roadway and those get washed in and. We're managing those types of runoffs, not only for our infiltration systems, but also to. A small concentrator of products, which will separate out some of the floatable oils as well as settle out. Sands and sediments before going into. Our subsurface systems as well as into our stormwater detention system. You have pretty extensive landscape plan. David, I'm flipping to. Page five. Five A, excuse me. Nice, fast for me. So in association with the building at the north end. We're proposing substantial landscaping to complement. The new landscaping that was installed for the Bernie building. So I don't know if you've had an opportunity to drive up, but there's quite a bit of landscaping where there didn't hardly. There was hardly any landscaping before. So. The idea here is to enhance the property and. Make it a, make it a campus. For, for the end users property. Similarly, on this plan, David, I flipped page five B. You can see the street trees that are proposed for this development as well as in islands. Also some foundational plantings along the building and then. Important to the Wetlands Commission, we did have a substantial buffer planting proposed between our drive aisle. And the existing wetlands on site. And of course, in the detention basin, we'll have that planted out with. With a meadow type mix. Providing habitat and food for insects and birds and what have you. We are still waiting for. Information from our lighting consultants. We hope to have that to you in the next week or so. We did get initial comments. From Jim, former town engineer. And when we had gotten comments, revised plans and comments back to him, it was a little bit too close for comfort for him and. And he was unable to finish his review. So we're waiting for a review from an outside consultant. Which staff is forward of that to, I think S L R is the company. So wait for comments from that. We did. We noted today that there are comments from. The Public Utility Commissioner. Which we want to address and was also handed a document from the Health Department, which.
Oh, you have, you have one already?
Don't be surprised.
I'm already dismissing.
Here it says no.
No, we, we just received it. So, and I'm not ready to answer any of those questions, but happy to answer any.
Dynast, we just mentioned the N D D B letter that we got. I didn't even be.
Natural diversity database. So. In this particular location. And, and, and in areas throughout the industrial park, corporate park, there are. Areas where certain types of. Endangered or listed species might be living, might be habitate, you know, habitating. So not in our particular instance, there was note that there is a butterfly. That likes a certain type of flower that grows on a certain type of rock. And we're not certain if that rock exists, a limestone type rock. But it's been noted in the area, I think. Someone had referenced that across the street where they had removed a lot of rock and exposed some of the rocky slope. We think that it's the same. So to, to that end, because the D E P. Told us what we needed to watch out for. They did submit, send a letter to us stating that. You gotta watch for, you know, we'll look for the plants, which gives a place for a certain butterfly to lay its eggs. So look for the plant and, and. If possible, create a habitat for it. So in other words, plant materials if this type of rock is present. And then also they asked that we plant some. Milkweed and, and other type of. Plants that provide nectar, food for that butterfly and, and other butterflies and. Wildlife. So perfect opportunity to do that in the buffer area here. But perhaps along the curvies where there might be exposed rock. And of course, that all makes it a detention.
Thanks, Dynast.
You're welcome.
It's called the metal mark butterfly.
Metal mark?
Metal mark.
Metal mark.
So the project that we've proposed to you will end up with having more than two hundred parking spaces on the property. And have more than a hundred thousand square feet of floor area. So that puts it in the jurisdiction of the Office of the State Traffic Authority. For a major traffic generator certificate. So we've got to go to them. Which we can't do till after we have an approval from you, but we will do that. And in addition, we're on a state highway, aggressive plain street. So with those two factors. Knowing that we have to go there, we engage a traffic expert, Joe Valskus, who you're familiar with. We've asked him to prepare a report, which is complete and will submit to you tomorrow. But he's on the Zoom tonight and I'd like to ask him to. Briefly discuss his findings to the extent they're important for you. And there are a couple of issues that we think are important for you. Joe. Joe's unmute.
I, I was on double mute just to be sure. So. For the evening, for the record, Joe Valskus, professional engineer, traffic engineer for the project, as, as Peter mentioned. Couple of things. Yeah, he mentioned the, the Office of State Traffic Administration. We will be going to them for, for administrative decision application. We were not planning to do any improvements on the project. So that should make us, allow us to have a more streamlined application through the administrative decision process. So let me give a, just a quick, a quick presentation on the traffic study that we're submitting. I could talk about it. David, can you put up a site plan number three? And I, I think, because I want to, want to point out a couple of things. So for the traffic study, we did do traffic counts back in December of last year, not during Christmas time, early part of December. We counted the intersection of Grassley Plain Street with Francis J Clark Circle. And yeah, just, yeah, site plan threat is number three. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. So we did travel accounts at the signal, our, our study area, we basically looked at the inter-signalized intersection with, with fifty three aggressive plain street. As well as the internal intersection with, with second, second lane. And we chose those two intersections because the, the overall project, as you heard described by Dynast and Peter. It's not a high generated traffic, just type of use. We're looking at about seventy vehicles. In the morning peak hour, seventy afternoon peak hour. So a little, about one car per minute. So not a high generated traffic, but even so, we looked at the signalized intersection. Just to see what, what's happening there. How's it operating? We've been out there. I've been out there, looked at it. It operates very well, if you're familiar with it. And so that, that, that case led, led us to, okay. How's it operating? And then the proximity of the intersection to the site drive. To the first building there in the corner. That's something that we had, had looked at and talked, and worked with Dynast on that. How to, where to locate a site drive. How does that make sense? And we looked at that by doing a capacity analysis of the traffic signal intersection. And as you know, capacity analysis, we look at the traffic counts. We do the timings from the signal. And we look how it's operating. It's operating very well. You'll see in the report, it's operating level service B. As you know, A to F is, is the graduation, the gradations for level service and B is very, very good level service in the morning and afternoon peak hours. So when you add our traffic, there's really no issue in terms of the level service. However, the intersection is close to the post-site driveway. So we did look at the intersection itself and. When, when you're leaving the site, eastbound direction of traffic, going and going to aggressive plain street. We'll have backup and block the site drive. We, we want to avoid that wherever possible. And, and we looked at the analysis and the site driver is about a hundred and some odd feet from the stop bar. And you'll see in our, in our analysis, it's showing about ninety six feet. So you can see Joe, it's pretty close. However, the, the intersection, the grassy plain street intersection with Francis J Clark Circle. The approach is a wide single lane approach. It's about twenty five feet wide. Can it be two lanes? It can be two lanes. We analyze it as a single lane. But we know, watching the traffic out there, that if you turn right, you'll go to the right more and you can literally stack two lanes of cars there during a peak time if you need it. So. So we, we think we're very, we're very in good, good shape with in terms of the, the queues. On the eastbound approach, aggressive plain street, because we analyze it as a single lane, even though it operates kind of two lanes. It's, it's a wide lane approach. So we're very confident with the location of the site driveway and proximity to. The traffic signal and the traffic that may be waiting there. And we have a very good level of service. So. Really no traffic issues to talk to, talk about. That was really the only concern we had initially and locating the side driveway. But it, it is a good location. We have plenty of storage. If we had to, we could restrict the two lanes. Don't think you need to at this point in time. But maybe as development proceeds in the park, you might want to consider doing that in the future. But regardless of all that, as, as Peter mentioned, this will be going to the Office of State Traffic Administration for administrative decision application. And they see anything, they'll point it out, but we're very confident in the work we've been doing on, on project in Bethel as well as for, for the Office of State Traffic Administration. That we won't see any issues there with, with regards to that. So. And in summary, overall low generated traffic, we have a signalized intersection that's operating very well. We're adding about one car per minute during the peak hour. We have sufficient storage between the stop bar and the site driveways proposed. It's a wide approach. We could go to two lanes if need be, but we don't, we don't see need for it. The sight lines are good there, the intersection. Oh, crashes. There's really no crashes. We found one crash at the intersection. And so. So this is, this, there's really no major issues here to talk about and, and mitigation. Don't need to run a mitigation because there. There, there's plenty of reserve capacity at the intersection. So I'll leave it at that. No significant impact. To the area. We can accommodate the, you know, additional traffic at the intersection, operates very well. And the site driveway is located sufficiently a distance from, from the stop bar where the intersection. And I'll take any questions. And we'll submit a report to you tomorrow.
Thank you, Joe. That's all that we have for tonight. We're happy to answer any questions that the commission has. But in the meantime, we'd ask that this be continued to the twenty seventh. So that we can get the rest of these reports in, out of all those eyes and credible issues.
What about the public? Is there anyone, the public would like to? Please come first. No, come on out. We can get you.
I do know about the butterfly. The Lyme Kill Quarry, the quarry everyone's, there were scientists that would come and study the habitat and that's just the suck. So if you need more information about butterfly, Lyme Kill Quarry. So if you need more information about butterfly, Lyme Kill Quarry and their board of directors. I do have a question about the traffic and knowing that south of here, south of there on fifty-three, if the property is right now, there's nobody, you're not built building for a company, but if it's light manufacturing, what kind of trucks, because we know that we can't have tractor trailer trucks go south on fifty-three, so they're all going to have to come north. And so while that light isn't really a problem, and I run that way all the time, and the building that you've done there is lovely, and I can completely appreciate the grade because I run up that hill every day. But my concern is those three lights further up fifty-three grassy plain. So all the traffic is going to be coming from that major from the corner of the Sycamore and three oh two. Further down. So especially since you don't know who's going to be in there and what the traffic is all going to be flowing from the most dense part of Bethel with a higher crash rate and incidences. What would that do further up the line? So that's just a question to the commission to consider. The applicant probably can't answer that because you don't know who's going to be in there because you're not building it for a specific type of industry yet. But that would be the concern because any tractor trailer or truck like that can't go south. You have to come north. So that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else to ask any questions? In the public, about David Albert online?
I'm not seeing any hands raised on Zoom at this time, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Obviously, the entire industrial park is impacted by the railroad bridge. It has since it was built. Joe, if if you can address the, I guess, the the frequency and increase in truck traffic that this might generate and and potentially affect other intersections compared to the rest of the industrial park.
Yeah, Peter, so so a couple of things. On the truck driver, we'll look at the the travel counts that we did. We do classify, classify, classification of vehicles. And we can see the percentages. You know, typically, it's like three to five percent on the roadway. And, you know, I don't anticipate the truck traffic significantly increasing as a result of this. But I, we could look at the the existing truck traffic on grassy plain street in Francis J Clark Circle and see what that is and try and make a objection for it. I I can't, I can't guess right now what the truck traffic increase will be. I could just say that based on past experience with these type developments, we don't see a significant increase in truck traffic that warrants looking and looking, looking at the capacity analysis in a different light in terms of you've got, you know, if you're near a gravel pit and you're excavating and you're bringing a lot of, you know, a lot of dump trucks in there, it's definitely something different than this. This is is industrial, but in terms of overall truck traffic, we don't see a significant change in the percentage of trucks. But truck traffic is sometimes a quality of life issue. So we'll look at the percentages on the road today. And what we can expect to see in the future. But it's really not a a significant percentage increase that we see in the past from these type of developments.
Thank you, Jeff.
Penny? I'm sorry, Ken.
What was the contaminant that was covered up?
Well, it was from casting sand. I don't know the exact chemical.
It's just a cast of sand from the moldings they did for the components they made and they buried it.
I'm sure this stands as all about it.
Yeah.
And there'll be the every name.
That was my only question.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, I have a question. Um. Actually, it's a two parter. You had mentioned that it that the removal of this material is going to be overseen and you used.
LEP.
And that means?
Licensed environmental professional.
Okay.
So what what the state did many years ago is decide that the DEP shouldn't oversee environmental remediation anymore. And they created this whole, yeah, they just created this whole I'll use the word scheme, but I'm not using it in a pejorative way. Where they have a certified person, licensed environmental professional who designs the remediation and oversees the remediation and essentially just reports what happens, what they're going to do and what they did to the DEP. So all the DEP has to do is sign off on it and rely on what the LEP, a trained professional, did. So the state doesn't have to pay for having all those people on staff. Basically, that's what.
Okay, understood. Just help educate me. Um. Is there any concern about removing that material? I know that when you're dealing, for instance, with asbestos, you just want to like shut it down, cover and all of that. I'm being very uneducated here. Is there any danger in the removal?
We don't have any concerns about the removal of this material. And our LEP will design a plan. It's called RAP. Environmental people love their initials.
What's RAP?
Immediate Action Plan.
I'm so confused. Okay.
They love acronyms. It's very good. We'll design an RAP to make sure it's removed safely and effectively. It'll be taken off-site and burned, I think.
It's all, it's all out of state, actually.
Or or buried in upstate New York somewhere.
Okay, and the great for New York State.
Yeah.
Um, and the reason for removing it as opposed to just letting it sit and what's?
Dynast has proposed a perk lot and a detention basin in that area. And the detention basin requires that we excavate down. Six feet? Sixty total. It'll go right through the cap.
And you can't have that material.
And and we don't really want water percolating through it, infiltrating through it. So. Correct. Okay.
Other than that, I I don't think I have any other questions. That was, that was the big one, was just my concern about how it gets removed, where it gets removed to, considering it's been buried for all of this time.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm a, I'm a little bit saying we're kicking the can down the road. But what I am saying, what I am saying is that there's a different process that governs that, that's fully licensed and controlled.
Okay.
Is that that we're going to go out with a backhoe and and a six pack and do it, you know, so.
Having, having been here for a while, DEP will never allow that.
I just, I just.
And in the wetlands too.
That just.
Neither would we.
That I was just concerned about.
No, absolutely.
What happens if?
Right, absolutely. Rob?
Peter, the rendering on the floor down there, because I don't, I assume that's just like a hypothetical.
I mean, it's one of the, right, that's that's what we're going to adjust our plan to reflect that design. Yeah, that's not a building plan, obviously.
Right, yeah. Tony, do you want to speak a little bit about it?
The intention of it is to be a sixteen thousand square foot, single story warehouse, building, like industrial warehouse with a loaded dock and to the right side or center, depending on what kind of make of along, it would have a smaller room for an office to go with the warehouse.
So what it, what is that?
It just seems off scale.
It's not there.
Oh, this is. All the cars and everything.
It's a rendering.
I went yesterday and I think that building wants to be bigger. Am I out of my mind? Do they blow it up?
That's a rendering of what it would look like.
What's going?
The scale looks weird on that.
Yeah.
I know that pretty well.
That hill is pretty big.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, Mr. Rizzo, could you state your name for the record?
Uh, yes, Tony Rizzo Junior. I'm the managing member for Jar Associates.
Thank you.
The the scale, I, it's, it looks like. It's it's hard to picture.
Right.
Yeah, that's one story and the cars. But anyway, I was just curious about.
Well, one, one story, but but probably twenty feet tall, right? Maybe, maybe a little bit. So it so it does look a little bit taller. But that allows for stacking of, you know, of toilets or or shelving within that building, similar like.
A warehouse would obviously be.
Yeah, like, yeah. But I do know that's industrial property, but that is sort of a gateway into what, it's one of the more attractive industrial parks in the Northeast, probably in the, in the States. So you know, at this stage, I know it's preliminary, but we need to really consider the aesthetic of what's on that corner.
If I could just say, I think that that gateway to the park, which I do agree is the gateway, and I do think it does look beautiful. But I don't think it did twenty-four months ago.
And. Oh, the work that you've done so far is.
And I think our attention would be that building would be sized to the lot. To fit a third way. We wouldn't do anything there that would address that corner, which is why originally I think we had proposed possibly going a couple of levels, which wouldn't make any sense because we're blocking the other building.
Bob Legard?
I don't have any questions. I I I do feel the the purpose of that park and this corner is part of that park, you know, it's not considered part of Clark Park, is to generate jobs and to generate traffic. People using that park, you know, in an industrial or, you know, a business way, i- it's going to be a good thing.
That it, Bob? Thank you. Rich Tivik?
Hey, guys, no comment here. Thank you.
Oh, wow. Uh, yeah, I I'm gonna wait, but I'd like to personally go over it myself, which I have not done. So I'll wait for the next meeting. Uh, okay, so we'll continue this until six twenty-seven. Twenty-three. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have to leave that picture.
Okay.
Don't take it, Dynast.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-four National Road, LLC Arena Hamazi. So I'm changing from our ten to really center, twenty-two, twenty-four National Road. Uh, it's going to be continued on six twenty-seven, twenty-three. Now, we'll start our business meeting.
Do we need somebody?
Yes, we did. And that's going to be the next meeting as well. Okay, so, um.
I'm gonna have Rob Wallace for
For for Ken.
For Ken Stevens.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, yes. So Rob for Ken Stevens. Okay, next we have the minutes of five twenty-three, twenty-three. Would somebody, someone take a motion on the minutes, please?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of need.
Second. Thank you very much. Uh, next we have the invoices.
Yes, we do.
News Times, uh, we have
uh, Newsman, I'm sorry. Uh, for one thousand eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents. For legal noticing.
Would someone like to make a motion to pay the invoices?
I think that we pay the invoices of the News Times, one thousand eighty-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ken.
Discuss. I'm sure, brief discussion. I brought this up before and I'm assuming that nothing has changed, that everything has to go through a newspaper, that I will tell you on my street, on my wonderful street. I am one of two families that actually gets the newspaper.
Yeah, so if I ever need paper to wrap anything, and I know.
Well, that's.
Welcome to nineteen eighty-seven.
Yeah, really, when I take the drugs out.
But you know, my another neighbor is Do Do. They read it online.
Do they read it?
Yes.
I just want to make sure it's happening online.
Yes.
So it's happening. Hang on a second, guys, hold on. Is it, are you reading it online through the News Times or are you reading it online through the best? Through the News Times. Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
That, that, that was it.
Okay. So that's, um, make a motion to approve. Thank you. That's what I'm saying. Okay, Kenny, would you like to?
Voting.
Penny?
Yes, Penny.
Rob?
Rob.
Paul?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Which, which, Kitty Grant, yes. So all in favor? Motion, any against? A sentient motion passes.
This is not a really quick question, as long as people are reading it online and the News Times online and not in print. This seems like a thousand dollars for for these, and I saw the two of them. A thousand dollars seems like an awful lot of money for somebody to go online. It's not behind a paywall.
Every.
It's a lot of, it's a lot of money.
Yes.
Every legislative session, they try to do something to amend the rule. So I think with today's technology, it's getting close to the point where it's a it's if it's published on the web, it would probably be okay.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you.
Costs a lot of money to print six newspapers.
That should happen. I would think that's going to happen next year or so.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll, that'll be.
Okay, okay. No, good.
I'm sure we'll still have to pay for it, but.
Talking to our senators and representatives.
Kenny?
Yes.
I think i- i- I think the regulation, it it has to be a circulation of a certain amount.
Right, exactly.
They consider probably the online and the printed copy as circulation.
Right.
Probably. Probably. I I I tried to get someone to say that if we just printed it on our website and told people that you had to go to our website, and they told me, oh, no, 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 that's not going to happen. I said, okay. Just trying to save the town a few bucks. Okay, the next item, we have new business. So quintet, quintet, how do you say it?
Okay.
Like acquaintance, but no.
Oh, acquainted. Well, that, thank you very much. Nineteen Stoney Hill Road, Site Plan Special Permit Veterinary Hospital.
A public hearing was required for a veterinarian hospital to be located in the Wood Six Zone.
Oh, okay.
And it's an existing structure at nineteen Stony Hill with interior alterations, and that's it. Um, so staff suggestion is to do a public hearing on July eleventh, and the apple will explain his proposal.
Okay, so could we have a motion?
Yes, please, and refer to the.
I I move that we pull the public hearing for Donald Acquaintance Site Plan for Special Permit for Veterinary Hospital at nineteen Stony Hill Road on, on, well, on July eleventh, twenty-three.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Okay, next is Begel. Should say Beel, but no, Begel. Fifteen, one, one, one fifty Putnam Park Road, Special Permit for Retail Sale of Agricultural Products by a Non-Resident.
This is an interesting application. It it does require review by you guys, as we say, as a special permit. The owner of the property, it's the former Anna Land property, if anyone's familiar with that, across the street from Park. Uh, older home right up on the property. Anyways, the property owner has another piece of property. They're started, they own the property. They've started to grow produce on the property, but they do not live on the property yet. Do, or I don't know, play intend to, to their work that has associated with it. So they're requesting a special permit at a farm stand on the property, and my suggestion is to do it on the eleventh also. And let them explain to you
What do you think?
In depth of what they want to do.
Is this the property that's, they're doing a lot of work, kind of land work in front of it? It's multiple buildings. Is that one, Beth?
That's, that's the same one.
Yeah. With the pond up in the back.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, can we have a motion, please?
I move that we schedule a couple of hearings for Begel, Begel LLC, one fifty Putnam Park Road, Special Permit for Retail Sale of Agricultural Products by a Non-Resident for July eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you, Ken. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention, motion passes. Okay, our next is K and P Associate LLC, forty-two Funky's Road, Affordable Housing, eight thirty G, nine units, preserving existing home.
Uh, this is, you can find, you know, again, everything is on the drive, so if anybody wants to look and see what we're talking about, all they have to do is click on their computer. I will say we're the only board or commission in this town that does that. Um. At the land use commissions, pardon me. But anyways, so this is an affordable housing application at the quarter of Whittacy and Plum Trees Road, the old Margaret Reynolds property, um. A public hearing isn't required, but we suggest a public hearing, and the suggestion date for that is July twenty seventh, twenty twenty three.
So you wanna make a motion and schedule a public hearing?
I move that we schedule a public hearing for K and P Associates LLC, forty two Plum Trees Road. For Affordable Housing eight thirty G, nine units, preserving the existing home for July twenty seventh, twenty twenty three.
What's that, Thursday? The twenty seventh?
Twenty twenty seven?
No, it's gotta be Tuesday. Did I mess up on the date?
Yes, you did.
Thank you, catching that. It's the only one we scheduled that for the twenty fifth.
July twenty fifth.
Thank you.
I I amend that to say July twenty fifth.
Thank you, thank you, Rob.
Bob, would you like to second?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention, motion passing. Okay, next we have our work session. Steiner Incorporated Route Six to D C D Overlay Zone, Site Plan Special Permit, twenty two single family units. Benedict Road, eight, nine, ten, seventeen, Millbrook Road. We have, we did request at our last meeting, uh, but an approval. Resolution, maybe we have one.
Okay, you have two approvals this evening, one is for map amendment. An overlay for the, um, D C D.
The overlays.
That'll be your first motion. Can you take one and pass it on there? Second motion is first, I can special, Site Plan Special Permit for excavation.
I give my ignorance, what is D C D overlay?
Design. You have, you don't like acronyms.
I really don't like acronyms.
I will hear on it, I will spell it out for you.
It's, it's okay, I'm cool, but once I learn. Understood.
Oops, I'm sorry. That one's for me. And one for them, please. Okay.
Uh, for the record, I did watch the video, the meeting last week, or last meeting that I missed.
Thank you. So this is for the, uh, first is for the overlays. Yeah, a motion to approve a map amendment for a special parcel located at eight, nine, ten, and seventeen Millbrook Roads from Route Six to Route Six and D C D Overlay Zone on property shown. And quote improvement location survey consolidation that prepared sheets were Steiner Inc. Depicting property situated at Benedict Road and Millbrook Road, Town of Beaufort, State of Connecticut. Dated April twenty six, twenty twenty three, prepared by Zachary S. Rapp, E L S License seven zero four two zero. Reason, the commission finds that the proposed map amendment is in conformance with the twenty twenty plan of conservation and development and creates a desirable residential development that will support existing commercial entities located within the Route Six Zone. Do you have a second?
Second, second.
Thank you, Ken.
I just have a question. Um, the first line, nine, eight, nine, ten, and seventeen, Millbrook Road, from Route Six to Route Six. What am I missing?
You're missing D C D.
It's adding.
To the overlay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Bob. Rich? Yes.
Hi, sorry.
Yeah, opposed? Abstention, like in passes. Okay, I'm gonna walk you to the second one.
Uh, motion to approve a Site Plan Special Permit for excavation of build for, to be determined Benedict Road, eight, nine, ten, and seventeen Millbrook Road. Prepared by Divestor Civil Engineering LLC. Um, quote, homes and fieldstone commons dated February twenty three, to February twenty second, twenty three, last revised April seventeen, twenty twenty three, with the following stipulations. Um, the following items shall be addressed prior to the issuance of the zoning permit, and we have numbers one through thirteen. Reason, the commission finds that the site plan is in substantial, substantial compliance with the zoning regulations and the plan of conservation and development of the Town of Beaufort.
Have a second? Thank you, Paul. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, we're, everybody, Bob? Rich?
Aye.
And, I, Kenny? Opposed? Abstention, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice. Okay, now you have.
Mind that I, the liberty of adding votes. Putting Kara Roche on the, uh, present portion.
Yeah, that's just fine.
Yeah, I just, I did. You wanna take a look and see what you think?
Yes.
If that's something very simple for a change.
Simple. How do we get simple? That's right, over there.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit to, uh, for construction of a barn to house versus as shown on the site plan entitled Proposed Barn for Carrying Roche, eleven Sunset Hill Road, that will C T. Prepared by Sidney Rapp Land Surveying P C, revised April twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, along with architectural renderings prepared by Terrence P. Lemon Architect. The commission notes the following, a variance was granted and filed with the devil land records volume one, one, sixteen, page seven, believe. The front yard setbacks from fifty feet to twenty five feet. Special permit is granted for, uh, section three, four, C, one, B of the zoning regulations pertaining to a structure being allowed in the front yard in section three or F one C exceeding the maximum requirement, requirement for, uh, pertaining to size of the six, one thousand six hundred and twenty eight square feet. To become effective, this special permit resolution shall be filed on the land records in the town hall's office. Copy of the filed resolution shall be submitted to planning and zoning department. Reasons, in granting this approv- uh, approval, the P and Z commission states that the proposed project will not have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties or in the development of the surrounding district.
Second, thank you, Paul. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob?
I have a comment on it also, uh, it's not to handle something where the neighbors like it.
Like it, I, I think they fell in love with it, Bob.
I, I actually have a question. I know it says that we're, we're granting this because it won't have a detrimental effect.
No.
Can we add something to the effect of will not only not have a detrimental effect, but will enhance neighboring properties? Is that something we can put in here?
If you feel it will enhance the.
We have a vote on the floor with a second right now?
You're right.
Yeah, but this is discussion, you can discuss.
The discussion first, alright.
Oh, you already took votes on this?
We were starting, sorry.
Well, what, discuss, you didn't finish your vote, did you?
No, we didn't finish.
So I'd like to make an amendment, if that's okay, and I, I get it, I understand. Um, that reasons, it's, it should, it says, in granting this approve, for this.
That's.
In granting this approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission states that the pro- proposed development will not only have not have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties, but will add, will, but will enhance neighboring properties or the development of the surrounding district.
I think, I think that, I do, but you have to go down whether or not you wanna take the amendment.
Okay, so that's, you amended that. Motion. Someone, someone has to second that, that there is an amendment.
Well.
You have to accept the original. I'm sorry, guys.
No, please, go ahead.
On my gate. You have a motion and a second on the floor.
Yes.
So whoever made the motion, will you accept the amendment?
Rob.
I'll accept it.
And, and will the second accept the amendment?
Paul.
Yes.
Okay.
Then you have to vote on the acceptance of the men- amendment to.
I have a question.
Hold on, hold on, please. I'm sorry.
I mess you.
I appreciate the spirit. I, I would just be cautious with uh, confirmative language. Like, what if it doesn't? For whatever reason, you know what I mean? So I think you say it may, right? You just said, I don't know, in, in, you know, the, the legal sense of things, I'm always concerned about. I, I appreciate the spirit of it, but.
And may enhance.
Right, right, sorry.
Will not have a detrimental effect on neighboring properties and may enhance neighboring prop- properties or the development of the surrounding district. Rich, so, so the may is what's.
We did it, we'll call it, it was a typo, it should be may.
Thank you.
And the amendment, you're voting on the amendment that was.
Yes.
Proposed, so, accepting the amendment, take your vote, kid, if you don't mind, I apologize. Dehydrated.
Okay.
So I'm getting a little.
Okay, Bob?
Aye. In favor?
Rich?
Good.
Ken? Penny?
Yes.
Rob?
Yeah.
Yes.
And now we've gone on the whole thing.
The whole, the whole motion.
Correct.
Okay. Paul?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Kitty, yes, Penny?
Yes.
Ken? Bob?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I can passes. Nobody votes no? Nobody's, reunion, stomach. Motion passes.
Yes.
We did.
Most complicated decision they've made this year.
Next we have regulation amendments. On our agenda here.
Yes, that's correct. Mr. Parsons, do you wanna take the lead on this, or do you want me to go?
Uh, you've made some interesting adjustments to the T O D in the past.
Yes.
And I thought we should discuss it and possibly vote on it.
Okay, I'm just note for the record, we didn't, I didn't receive your letter, and nor did Dan Carter.
Okay.
All right, just so you know.
All right.
Okay, so, uh, the last time, um, well, we've discussed the T O D regulations and in regards to our other applications that have been coming up that were of, on very intense and items. Um, in discussion of the regulations during, uh, the process, we also discussed that there was one other thing that we should look at, and that is with making a map amendment, a map amendment to the T O D zone, dividing it into two areas. One dealing with the hardcore area of Dry Avenue, Greenwood Avenue and Diamond Avenue, and the rest of it dealing with your residential areas and your R M Os and, um, those areas. So seeing the anxiousness of the general public, you have to understand too that the commission has been very busy with other applications from items that have taken a lot of legal challenges and things of that nature over the last couple of months. Okay, this, the application, those of you that have sat on a land use commission also understand that, um, sometimes applications and revisions and things of that nature take a long time. This started the end of March, and between that time, we've had some contentious public hearings dealing in the port of housing. That took a lot of the commission's time, and we remind everyone of it, that we are a voluntary mission. In respect to that, I also think it's important for the commission to be aware of with conversations that I've had over the last couple of weeks. Uh, that, uh, D P Z, the original authors of the T O D plan, will be working with the Town of Beaufort very shortly in, um, some guidance and review of the T O D itself and the regulations. Um, so with the forward. Again, that probably will not be happening until, I would say, August of this year. Um, but I think the biggest hurry, and maybe I'm misunderstanding what your, I hope your intent was good, Ken. Um, I think the biggest mis- misunderstanding out there is fear. And that fear is.
All I'm hearing.
And, and that fear is what's gonna happen with Diamond Avenue.
Well, not just that, but just in general.
Okay, so as far as Diamond Avenue is concerned, um, I'm, I've been doing this for many, many years. I'm not concerned with what was originally presented to the board, which was a four-story, I think it was four, three buildings with four stories. Building, highly residential, things of that nature. Since that has happened, um, staff has been talking to the property owner. I would even say the first selectman has engaged with staff um, to make his concerns known, which is been basically what the commission has said. Dealing with height, dealing with density and things of that nature. So, but at the same time, if the commission wishes to make these changes, it is your decision, it is not mine, but I just wanted to try to give some calm to what I consider to be a lot of fear and concern in the general public, but also at the same time, I think it's important for the general public to know that it's not something that's been tabled, that it's not something that's been put on the shelf. Um, there has been work that has been done on it since this was initiated in March, and I think by including professionals, you can even go farther with it if you choose to. But in the meantime, you do, I do have copies of the revisions that were proposed. Um, you have copies of it, if you need an extra copy and you wanna do something with the seating, please feel free. Um, I also have a copy, I, I just have one large copy of the, uh, T O D, what we would say, maybe a map, or the map amendment. Um, only because I'm cheap and I wouldn't print seven large format copies on our plotter here in town hall, so if you wanna go through it and look at it, I would encourage you to do it. Okay, definitely. Yes, you gotta pass this down. Two, I may have a, one, two, three. Two, three. That enough? Yeah, all right. Well, why didn't you choose here and then we were pointing, Rich, in case? Please just check.
These are some of the changes we talked about earlier this year.
That we had a public hearing on in March. I was dealing with, do you need me to review it with you, or? Walking through it a little, how do you guys, whatever you guys.
I think you can walk us through the, through it, sure.
Hey, you were talking about changing the, um, when you're dealing with the dimensional standards in regards to height?
Yeah, that was a big one.
Height was huge.
Yeah, okay. Um, dealing with the underlying zone.
Yep.
You want them, underlying zone, which in this instance is residential, you're gonna have to excuse the guys, I have to get water.
Can we think on, I'll take a five minute break.
I worked in the garden tonight, and I sure.
Okay, um.
Make a motion and take a.
Motion to take a five minute break, please. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay.
I. Whatever. All right, pertaining to height, the simplest way to say it is if the underlying zone is residential, your standard residential requirement is two and a half stories or thirty five feet. And it's by understanding that's how we wanna keep it, that applies to the R M O zone, the double R ten zone, the single family zone. The other thing you wanted to do was also to change the requirement from the, for the commercial. The other thing you wanted to do was also to change the requirement from the, for the commercial district and the industrial properties from four stories to three stories.
It was my understanding that this commission wanted to erase the four stories.
Correct.
Period.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
But it's, but the best, the the complication is we're doing it by zones. And then we're creating a a another, it's it's a difficult layer of regulating by doing it. Instead of, you know, it was like, what what this proposal is doing is say blanking it, blanketing it with the TOD.
Right.
Instead of what we also were struggling with, is it better to map it, you know, to map amendment?
Right.
And then have the two portions. You have regulations for a TOD zone one and regulations for a TOD zone two.
Okay.
But if there is such inks in regards to this, if this is the route you want to go, you can do this. Well, I'm telling you right now, you will come back to it.
Right, it's gonna be a living document. We're gonna be working on it.
Well, that's what we've been doing since the beginning of this, starting when this started back in March.
Right. Right. But if we wait too long, next year, could our projects come in and they can be doing four stories?
But again, when you, when you're, when you're regulating, when you're working on zoning, you're working from a plan document. And zoning is always evolving. But you, you can't just do it. You can't be reactionary. You really have to understand the purpose of what you're trying to accomplish and the best way to accomplish that. And that's why you look at it from two directions. You look at it from a regulatory point of view, and then you look at it from a map amendment point of view to make it very clear. Um, so you know, my concern is I just don't want you to be reactionary. I want you to feel that this is the right thing to do and not do it out of fear. That's my biggest concern is that you're doing it out of fear. And like I said, if you're doing it out of fear because of what could be proposed. But I will tell you that anyone that has come into the office um to discuss any kind of um, any application or anything that they wanted to do in the TOD zone, it has been made perfectly clear along with and to the Diamond Avenue pro- uh proposal that four is out. Um, the other thing pertaining to that is that thirty units an acre is gonna change. It's not gonna be thirty units. With that understanding, because again, you have to, and I'm not about one way or the other. I'm just trying to help you to understand what you, what you.
Oh, isn't good.
Want to accomplish, you know, there are way, there are things that you do that you have more. Uh the, I think one of your biggest problems, and I I hate to speak like this, but I will frankly, is that you have been nothing but um bashed with eight thirty G applications for the last two to three years. And it hasn't given you time to focus on the good things that could happen in town and that should happen in town. When you think about it. I mean, you're spending hardcore hours in time dealing with eight thirty Gs.
How close are, how, how close are you to?
What?
Feeling this out? Yeah, no, no, I mean feeling out what we have here already.
Well, you say. It's your decision. If you want to, if you want to ma- make these changes now and see what happens, go, you can do that. I'm just telling you, in the future, there's gonna be more.
More what?
More changes.
Oh, yeah.
Regulations.
Yeah, we understand.
That's all. Anyways, going back to this, the second part of this was changing thirty units negative twenty.
Right. That was what we wanted to do.
That's it with TOD. I've got something else to discuss with you too.
So Beth, what do we have to do now? What do we have to do too?
Well, you have, you have the copy that was submitted to you. It's dated to fourteen twenty-three. If you choose to make a decision tonight, you can. If you want to table it and review it more, you can do that. You can do whatever you want at this point.
Okay, commission members.
If you do it though, if you do make it a decision to go forward with these changes to the regulations, I'm gonna ask you to go back because we forgot. You have to set an effective date. And I would suggest the effective date would be July first.
Okay, Bob?
I understand the uh the concern here that maybe we're going too slow on this thing. But you you going too fast could be just as dangerous as going too slow. Somewhere along the line, we gotta hit the happy medium. Uh I I'd be willing to wait for the experts to tell us, you know, how to get out of this. What we should come out with in the, on the other end. Uh we we have the ability to get rid of the four stories. Then then we should do that, you know, somewhere down the road.
Why, why wait, Bob? If 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 that's what, if that's what the majority of.
Let's say wait, it may, you you know, knee jerk reaction to get rid of the four stories i- i- it might be a good thing, but what i- is it might be something in the, in the weeds that we don't know about.
Bob, can you give it for exa- for instance? For example?
Example, why, why, why was four stories put in in the first place? We're going back to the people that that helped us write the TOD regulations and asking them to assess how they think it's working and how it's not working and what's working and what's not working. There might be other things we want to do. But we have to have a confidence that we did the right thing in the first place.
Maybe we didn't.
Okay, Rich, you want to comment? Mr. Tim?
I'm here. I gotta move my, my, my hand to the unmute button. Um. Yeah, I mean, listen. It's, it's a slippery slope of, especially with things like TOD regulations that happen on, you know, that are reviewed every how many years? I don't know, Beth, what's, what is it? How often do we?
This was, this was what, in sixteen, right?
We haven't processed since um twenty eighteen.
Yeah, it was, yeah. So, so every couple of years, whatever, but.
But at the same, Rich, what kind of development have we received over the last five years?
Eight thirty G.
Right.
And 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 changing, we can, we could say zero stories and people can still come in with eight thirty G applications with four stories. So we can TOD our, our way all over town, but the, the, the issue that we're running into, that everybody's experiencing pain from and fear, whatever you guys want to call it, is because we are at, you know, we're like this from the state level and it's getting worse, not better. And it's, you know, a lot, a lot of it's out of our hands. I, like, I would almost love to see an actual development come in where someone's like, hey, I want to like in downtown, I want to do this thing where it's human scale. Like, I'd love to, I'd love to hear somebody actually present a development opportunity in town in the TOD that actually reflects the TOD. That hasn't happened in all the time I've been here since we wrote the TOD and updated them. You know what I'm saying? Right? It's always been these weird little edge cases of, well, let's squeeze this thing in here and let's do this weird thing and oh, you don't approve it. I'm gonna make it an eight thirty G application then, you know? It's the truth, right?
That's the hard part, Rich, because when, when TOD didn't work, they just said, okay, we're doing, we're doing eight thirty G.
I know. So it's double edged sword. So that's my point. And and so I tend to agree with Bob, like, like a lot of effort was put into the initial plan and and many many years before that, time and time again, a lot of work goes into it. So like, I tend to agree that like knee jerk reactions are generally not a good thing. Um, if there, if there is an aspect, like if four stories feels too tall, like I, I am not a builder, I'm not an architect. Four stories actually has multiple, um, uh it can be viewed in a lot of different ways, like four stories can be a roofline change, four stories can be four actual stories of the flat roof. You know what I mean? There's a lot of like nuance to how that all works. It it actually all nets out to height. Right? So like the initial, if you, if you know mixed development, right? The first floor could be twenty feet high and then there could be one apartment and it's still three and a half stories. You know what I'm saying? So there's a lot of there's a lot of building nuance. And and so like to me, I think we I think we, we want to talk to the people that helped us build it in the first place and maybe that was part of it, right? Like, I, I remember going through the process and I think a lot of it was, we were getting a lot, a lot of the public's feedback was we keep talking about these urban environments. We're not, we don't consider ourselves to be an urban environment, right? And and I think, you know, their intentions were good, but maybe there was, maybe that was the miss, right? Was like, what, what does our town want, right? And and we did the charrette and all that stuff was great. Um, but I, I just worry that it making sweeping changes without truly, again, you said at the beginning, we're volunteers, right? We do the best we can to learn really quickly and and absorb a lot of this stuff around zoning and planning and building and that, but I think if if we're able to have a review with them or talk to them briefly about it, like that would be, I think the direction I would go rather than to say, cause you know, the commission could change, right? People could, you know, people are up for reelection soon and be included. And uh there could be a totally, a totally different opinion about the TOD, right? So to make a change now, only to have it change again, does that make sense? Does that do anything for us? Right?
Fine, can I speak in regards to that?
Sure.
Sure.
Um, in regards to the four stories, that the proposed height reduction, I think was something that um you as a commission almost felt strongly about that it was too much for the downtown area. I think it also, um looking at something that is four stories in height, whether it be in the downtown area or in the Route Six corridor of that nature, it gave you two concepts to look at. One was the upstream properties on forty-eight Stony Hill Road, and the other one was the first conceptual drawing for nine and eleven Diamond Road, Diamond Avenue. So I think based on that, um from a planner's perspective, it, 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 it opened dry a little bit because you did have examples, right? You have an example of what a four stories little, would look like, what a three story looks like and things of that nature. Um, I think it was, and I may be wrong, but I'm almost feeling that it was overwhelming. Any, anyone that I've talked to, that's all they talk to me about is the four stories. They all think Diamond Avenue, they're gonna put four-story buildings back there, five sto- five buildings, three buildings, whatever it is, they're gonna be four stories, they're gonna be tons of apartment. I would tell you that from a design point of view, when TOD was created by DPC, um, a lot of the fault, I believe, lies with the developer and the property owner because they do not understand what the premise was supposed to be. We give you pipe, you give us green space. And that didn't happen. You give us height and they give us parking lots. And that's the difference between what was, what, what the intent was of TOD and the design plan that was put in place versus what is happening here now. And I just want to throw that out there. I mean, I think the four stories is a is, is not going to affect anyone's plans to utilize their property in the future.
Man, when I came to the four stories and we were talking at the shret, all I envisioned was the train station and all of that empty property right there. And I could see four stories right there, no problem. And when it came even to Diamond Avenue, I thought now those people are going to be living there and then they're going to be going walking to the train station right from there. Which, which never happened again. If, if the, the state wouldn't help us out. Uh but when I think of in a residential area and I think of a four-story building, I, 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 I should, I think, that would, I'm gonna force to a building near me and, and, and my, uh, and my development, no. So I think, I, I think Rich, Rich's point and Bob's point are good ones. Talking to the people who do this could help us.
That could not, that could be several months.
Well, you said August.
Yeah.
This is.
You have one meeting in August and you're gonna be, again.
Okay.
You know, it's not, it's not, we're still trying to work out the details.
But on- once again.
But I mean, I don't know, you know, if we may I'm trying to work out the details for that. It's gonna take time, guys. I'm, I'm being very honest with you.
No, it's, it's not, you're, you're right. It's not gonna, because.
We eliminated the four stories in Route Six because we all saw what happened and as a commission.
Oh, yeah.
Right. We all looked at each other and said,
Yeah.
That schmood, we all thought it sounded great and then the first schmood came in, we were like,
That was.
Wow. Concept behind Big Y up on the hill.
Yeah.
And and they were gonna put the four-story buildings in the Bethel side because they were allowed there and we all, as a commission, left, came back a couple of minutes later and we need to change that.
Yeah.
And maybe this is the shot of the bow, that should have been the shot of the bow to say, hey, maybe you should change that downtown too, and we're having the opportunity right in front of us right here. Even if we, even if we don't, if we don't feel comfortable, if we all don't feel comfortable, which I'm, I'm getting that vibe, that we don't feel comfortable all with some of these other changes. I think I'm getting the vibe and I could be wrong. That we're all on board, that we don't want the four stories.
Bringing it down to three.
So if that's the only change that we make right now, that's still a step in the right direction. And like Kenny said, it is a living document and it's gonna be worked on by the people that helped craft it years ago. And we're gonna be bringing in the experts, which I think us in the public all agree is a good idea to do. And you know what? If, if they come in uh six months, three months, a year from now and they propose a staff of changes, or they say, you know what, the only change that needed to be made was restricting that four to three stories and you guys already did it. Who knows? We'll, we'll cross our vision, we get to it. But I think, I think right now, as far as tonight, I think the one thing we should do is at least restrict the stories from four to three, if that's the only thing we leave here doing tonight.
I, I would also.
And affect the part with the underlying zone of the residential areas too.
Yeah.
Thirty-five feet or two and a half stories.
Yeah.
Do the height thing together. Let me explain to you, as far as DPC's involvement, we are still trying to figure it out. You know, um, DPC has expressed interest to man and see what we've done.
Yeah.
The good and the bad.
Right.
And um and but we're trying to work out the dynamics and of course, the financial aspect is also related with.
And this could, this could also be November.
So it could, you know, it could be a while is what I'm saying.
No, you're right, you're right.
But I think it's important.
Yeah, but the, okay, we're doing that then.
That, that's all, if, if we're now on, if we're not feel comfortable making sweeping changes, then let's, let's chip off a couple that we're comfortable with and a couple, a big one.
Well.
I think restricting, eliminating the four stories in TOD in, in also the, the, I, I like the underlying zone.
Um, right, being left.
Yes. If the underlying zone consists of the R ten, double R ten, the RNO zone, the dimensional standard requirements for a single-family home, a two-family home, child five.
Yeah, okay. But I also like changing the thirty units to twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think that's huge.
All right.
Rich, do you have any thoughts? I see you kind of shaking your head up there.
No, I'm just moving around. No, no, I, I, I just think, I, I don't know, maybe, you know, maybe you're a building designer and I don't know it, Paul, but like my concern and and Connecticut and every, it, it varies state to state, the way that they like, I don't care. I don't want four-story buildings. I get it. But my thing is, is four stories the same as forty feet, fifty feet, like, could somebody, like, I, I, I always think about, my benchmark is downtown is the building with the gym next to the old O'Neills. That's a huge building. And it may, and it's mixed use. And so the standard mixed use height for an office building is like ten foot eight. For residential building, it's eight foot six, right? And I'm sure that there's standards here, right? Um, you can bring it up if you want, Dave. It just appears to be huge to me. It's the biggest, it's the tallest building in town, right? So, so I don't know if Connecticut or Bethel or however it's broken down, I don't know if they measure it by the peak of the roof, the middle of the ridge, because those vary from, from state to state. So my concern is if we make a change to say, hey, no more four-story buildings. And people are like, yeah, that's cool. We're just gonna put big giant like uh roofline on top of it so it looks more appealing. It's the same thing, right? Cause we're, our concern is scale, not necessarily how many floors are in it. That's, that's all. So it, it, it's, I just think it requires a little more thought. And I don't know the answers to those questions. Beth probably does, right? So you can feel free to interject, tell me to shut up, but that's a big building.
Um, when you're dealing with a, a commercial building with retail, with something on the first floor and two other floors, you're talking about, you want at least twelve-foot ceilings for the commercial component and ten for the other two. So again.
For the floor.
Right. Right.
Right.
Right. So I mean, you are talking, you know, a three-story building is is about. I wanna say uh forty feet.
Sure.
You know, so what you're doing is you're eliminating that top floor. You have a three-story building in front of you. So the first floor could be twelve to fourteen feet. Um, with commercial, you need higher ceilings and the other two floors are ten. Ten each, so you're talking about, it could be thirty. You know, I'm not a builder.
But Rich, what you're also doing is 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 limiting another row of apartments, another floor of apartments.
Correct.
So you're you're limiting a little bit of density. Which you're still getting, you know, if you're putting in a three, a three-floor apartment building, you're still getting. What I think is appropriate density for our little town Bethel.
Yeah, no, that's fine, and and it it's gonna depend. Somebody could theoretically build a very thin building with four, with three floors, right? And you know, so it depends on the property. Uh, my point is, I use that building that we just showed, which I I don't know, maybe I'm crazy. But that building appears to be four plus stories to me. It's definitely over forty feet tall. So so. I get that it's three floors, but there's that huge space where there 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 could have been, because my thing is like. Like, in the interest of building nice-looking buildings, like I, like. I don't think we want a bunch of flat-roofed mini. Miniature skyscraper looking, you know what I mean? Like, I think about like, often, like, those buildings that are flat and square, which we wanted to get away from. Like, when we talked about the TOD, we were like, we need to have human scale, you need to have roof lines and pitch. Those buildings, like, I I think if you limit height, then people try to get tricky, developers in particular, will try to get tricky and be like, well. It's three stories, but it's gonna have this ugly roof and no definition, it's gonna be a box. So so I I I don't wanna paint ourselves into a corner, I'm totally with you. Listen, like, if it's, if that's where we wanna go, we wanna give it a whirl, like, like, like Beth said, I mean, or Kitty said, how many? How many applications have we gotten downtown that have actually had any real bearing on the TOD? Like, none. Um, so if we want to, as a preemptive strike, say that, I I'm all for it. I just worry that we might end up in the same situation, that's all. I I'm cool, I'm cool. Don't let me bother, I'm just playing devil's advocate, feel like we gotta think through it.
So I I I. I think that what I'm hearing, and I've been listening to all of this. Is that since this is a living. Breathing, growing, expanding, contract and document. What we did with the schmood, love that name, what we did with the schmood, we realized. This is not working. It was, it was taken back. I think that anything that we change here. We have the ability because we just living and breathing, you know.
You 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 can. But the thing, are you calling the, is the schmood the Route Six thing? Because I I wanna draw a line there. The Route Six is not the TOD, and I know it has bearing on this, but I but I want, I want you to be clear.
Of course, of course, it's not. What I'm saying is, we did something there.
Right.
We made a change.
Correct.
At a zoning change, and then we like, we put, we pulled it back.
Yeah, I, like I said, I, listen, guys, it's all good. I just want everybody to think through it beyond emotion and fear, right? That's not, that's not an appropriate way to make a decision, right? So. We wanna be factual in what we do. That's all. If if everybody feels good about it, that's cool.
I mean, it it this is. Correct me if I'm wrong, though. Rather than saying four stories. Can we give a height? I mean, what? I'm gonna say something and. Two weeks ago, we saw an application. And there was a building. And. The person told me it was only two stories. And I said, excuse me, two stories, but 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 look at this, there's a third one right there. Oh, but there isn't. I said, oh, but there is. So can can we get to a place where we give a height? Like. Foot, a foot, a square feet, so.
I think it's. Madam Chair, I I think it's also worth, if if you're gonna discuss height, I think it's worth defining. How that height is measured as well.
Yeah.
That, but but can we do something like that? Or is it just, is it always supposed to be one story, two story, three story, four story?
We regulations in other areas, when you're talking about a maximum building height. I kind of with six, it was. It was four stories uh or fifty feet. Okay, if the VC stone, in the VC zone. It is three stories. And a four maximum height of forty feet. Okay.
So.
Regulations read.
So does it make sense? Because we also have like a, we have a degree of control with the TOD, which is the good thing about. Um, you know, kinda like the Village overlay, right? Like, we have some say in how things. Look, but a very, very small degree, you know, we, they go through architectural review and that kinda thing. You know, like, my big concern is 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 if we, if we stick strictly to. Height, for instance, right? And and to David's point, it it depends on grade, and sometimes people can be tricky with if the back of the properties are in the front, blah blah blah. There's a lot of trickery that goes on, right? You know, or or whatever, call it whatever you want. But people are gonna get what they want somehow. So if we can exert, so I I totally agree with 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 Paul and with everybody, I get it, like, like, four stories feels too too tall. That building that we looked at, I, listen, I know the guy that owns it, nice guy, it's a huge building, it's been there forever, it is what it is. But if we had a whole, like, if we had a monolith of those buildings, it would look very odd. So I'm with you. Okay, my my point is, is like, where where do we balance? Look and appeal with. Numbers, like height and width and things like that, you know what I mean? Because I think if we, if we stick strictly to you, thou shall not build higher than X, they're gonna be like, that's cool, we're gonna, because a box, a rectangle. Is gonna yield the most square footage, true or false? Right? When you start putting pitches and roof lines and you lose square footage, builders don't want that. So so I feel like we just need to think through, how do we balance that out? And it may be just at a, at a, you know, to lop, uh, if you lop twenty feet off of it. That's a good start. But I just think we, you know, and to Bob's point, we wanna consider. How 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 do we, how do we explain this in a regulatory way to builders? To say, you can do this, but you can't do that. You mean?
We just don't.
I wanna be defensible when, when we have to deal, when we have to talk about these applications, hopefully they come, whatever, we can talk through them, but. That's all. But I'm with you, I'm with you all, I I totally agree. So if we wanna make a motion to. To to make that change, uh, like, I fully support it, I don't want people to think I'm not going to, but.
Hey, let's do it consensus.
But like, like stories, three stories.
Three stories or forty. I have a question, so. If. We do. If so, say we don't make a change. Is there a scenario where a proposed four-story development? Could be rejected based on aesthetics, based on what the community. Is, or is that what is written into law, we have to. Approve.
Basically, you had a TOD application. Recently that we're in court with now because you denied the side plan because it wasn't according to the architectural requirements of the TOD regulations. So that is.
So yeah, right, so Ben, it's a, right, it's it. It does no concern. Is there any way that the language could be written so that there's flexibility? And or is it all or none with. Saying.
I think a more important question is.
Versus a, you know, up to. Four floors or up to three floors.
The only question I wanna ask you, everyone, is, do you envision a four-story building anywhere downtown? That's the real question. If you don't, right now, then let's vote and be done with it.
That's pretty ton, yeah. Yeah, I'm I don't today.
I think, I think what we're doing is chasing our tail. And trying to. Trying to make, trying to include too much and too many details, and I think we're getting bogged down. In the two, in the too many details here. Do we want a four-story building in the downtown area? No.
No. So that, so that is what we should be facing right now.
I'd like, like, yeah, just maybe we can just keep it simple. And you know, it's funny because. I've never even looked at that building, Rich, that you were talking about. You know, with the, with the gym downstairs. It never occurred to me that it looked. Taller.
Than it is.
Than the other buildings. And if you look at it. Um, I wonder, I don't know, like, is the upper part, is that facade? You know, it, what what is that? Um, because as you look at the, if you do a comparison, they're like, you can't see anything I'm doing. Um.
No.
They're all kind of level, except that this one's got that.
Well, the one next one has that.
Here. Penny, I'll, I'll bring that up on on Google Maps right now.
Building that you're looking at, the bicycle building, it is three stories. Higher part of that building is somewhere is between sixteen and twenty-foot ceilings on the third floor. Okay, interesting. Older building. Again. Don't let I in. I don't wanna discourage you from doing whatever action you wanna do this evening, but don't let the size of that building. Discourage you from looking at Greenwood Avenue. At all in relation to what is already existing there.
Right.
And also, when you were talking before, as far, as far as besides and flat roof. You have to remember, a lot of those buildings along Greenwood Avenue have a false parap, uh, parap, parapet. False frontage with ornate, you know, gables and things like that, that actuate the thing. So, and and there is some protection. In the regular regulation. For allowances, those type of things to occur. So I, you know, I I I just wanted to let you be aware of that also.
Yeah, the consensus is we should do it.
Yeah. But are we doing it with what I'm seeing here?
Going from three stories. Four stories, the second, that's not what I'm seeing here, but I'm seeing here is three stories.
That's. Allowance, maximum allowance for height. That's not taking into consideration how tall the building is going to be.
We can do three stories or forty feet, correct? So it's more in line with what we have in Route Six.
Do you wanna make an emotion or consensus for Beth to write something on? We have right here in front of us.
Another comment.
Sure.
To me, the driving force behind. The TOD was to get people to live downtown.
Right.
Okay. And and the idea of of giving them uh the incentive to build something. That would cause people to live downtown or get people to live downtown. Without tearing down an old house in downtown. Without tearing down a a a whole neighborhood, without tearing up a whole. Mine of houses to get. A row of something that they wanted to build downtown. With people downtown. Yeah, we we were after green space too, yes. True, but we were also after keeping. The look of the, the, you know, the houses along Greenwood Avenue, along Grand Street, along, you know, different streets downtown. So that we had a a a di- a di- distinctive downtown. And I think we can do that. With. You know, the TOD. And making some minor changes, but not. Quick minor changes, you know, we 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 have to think this thing through. We, this isn't a normal. Downtown urban renewal type situation that you have in the big cities. Where they take whole blocks of, square blocks and and tear down the houses. And put up skyscrapers. Skyscrapers, we're not looking at that. I brought that up during the TOD studies. We we wanted the fifties in. And still keep the character of downtown, and I think we can do that. If we do it carefully. It was some. Professional advice. Thank you.
Yeah, I was probably right, but I'm getting up for this one item, I think, I think we can move forward. As a consensus. And and I said, I think we have it written right here. And so I. I I I think. Would that, someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to make change to section five eleven H two. With the TOD, for dimension standards summary table. Change the maximum allowance height shall be three stories or forty feet within the under, underlying commercial and industrial zone.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Madam Chair. There's a second part to that motion that you missed dealing with the underlying zones.
I'm sorry, if the underlying zone consists of the R ten, double R ten or R no zone and the dimensional standard requirements for a single-family home. And a two-family home shall apply.
That's two and a half stories, thirty-five feet, that's standard usage in all residential zone within the town.
Do we have a question? Do we have a second? Ten seconds.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Go ahead.
Best, we we can do this without a a a full public hearing on this thing, or?
You had a public hearing.
We have one ready.
Public hearing's over with this, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Item.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear.
Okay.
On this one item.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so can we have a vote? Paul?
I.
Rob? Kitty, I, Penny, I, Ken?
I.
Bob?
I.
Rich?
Sure.
Motion pass. There we are. There we go. Got a lot of accomplishment, didn't we? Okay.
So. Beth, can you just explain? I know we wanna, I know we wanna get out of here, just. Okay, no, I know, I know. I'm just looking at. That map over there, and I'm. Curious. The one that Beth didn't wanna, like, copy, zoning copies up. Um, it's a. What I did was an overlay of areas that were. Included in the majority of the TOD zone. Thinking, creating the lines of the true TOD area. And then outlining areas, it'd be like TOD one, TOD two. Green is TOD one, meaning Greenwood Avenue, the train station, our downtown area. The other areas that were originally included in the TOD zone. I have them with a softer labeling, the brown. To um, look at those zones as to. How you wanna proceed. Okay, thank you.
The eventual idea would. Would guide the architects to possibly. Amend TOD. I would too, this two versions, so.
Yes.
The, the actual transit corridor could have different rules and with what we just did, no, that could still.
That could be starting. What what you've done today may be starting. And that doesn't change um the village center, this is an overlay onto the village rep. That checkmark, got it. Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, do we, did we add a uh?
Effective date.
Effective date. July one, twenty twenty three. Okay.
So everyone agree?
Beth, can you read back the previous height? In the TOD to me, in stories and in feet?
There, give me a second. I already put it away.
Sorry.
While we're, while I'm. While getting that out, um, you have to go back and amend. What you just did with the uh. TOD, I with the uh Snyder map amendment, need to amend that to have an effective date.
Oh, we didn't have an effective date of that?
Yeah. Alright, so you wanna know, in the VC zone, maximum building height is three stories. In the commercial. Zone, it's three stories. In the industrial zone, it's two and a half stories, but by special permit, you can go up to four stories or fifty feet. And uh, the industrial park zone reads the same way. So maximum building height. Three stories or forty feet. In the commercial, it's three stories or forty feet. And a fifty-foot built, a a four-story building, the maximum height to that is fifty.
Okay, but our change that we're making is to eliminate four stories.
That's correct.
Period.
So a three stories forty feet.
Okay.
Alright.
Thirteen effective days for Steiner and Roche?
Now, Roche, we don't care, let us Steiner on the map.
Okay, so that's um.
Make the motions.
Penny and Paul. Um.
For the map amendment? Could you make um, add it? Yeah, I have the motion. I'm, I move. That we approve a map amendment, a map amendment. For a partial, as written reasons. Um, date, effective date, July first.
Second.
Okay, Ellen, favor?
I.
I.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
That's, do we need to, to do that with Karen?
No.
No, she said no.
No.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have staff report this evening. Uh, pretty much covered it's best.
Okay, commission comment. I can count one if you don't mind. Well, um, what are we doing in this session? We all?
We're tearing it down.
We're tearing it down. Okay. I, I, I saw the bags and the, and the fans putting up and. We know what they're, that we're gonna do with it? No. No, not here. Okay.
Bethel Housing Authority has expressed interest in developing senior housing there.
Genius.
Note that we're working closely with the town of Bethel.
That's great.
Motion to close it.
When that's.
Uh, we have public.
Oh, publicly.
Other, other commission members. Would anybody else, did any other commissioner have anything? To add tonight?
Well, talked out.
Paul? Well, okay. Paul, then. Do you have anything to add tonight? Anything to question? Anything to, you want to doodle dance?
Uh, they're, they're.
Yeah, somebody here.
Okay.
Julie Sartek, H D V, Bethel. Um, I just have a question with, when you, when D P Z comes back, they give up the regulations again, figuring the. Will the public be able to be part of the conversation with that?
We, we're in a very preliminary.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I, I.
So I can't answer that question at this point, because I don't know if it's going to be a joint bet chair with another party. Or if it's going to be the town in Bigfoot.
And. That map that you have for this, the two different areas in the TOD, is that going to be available for the public to see at some point? As far as the.
Um. If there's pursuit of, you know, changes for TOD and stuff like that, or you're welcome to come in the office and we'll get it anytime. All right?
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh. Cynthia McCorkendale, how's your hand raised?
Ms. McCorkendale?
Can you hear me as the caller there? Hello?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Cynthia McCorkendale, nineteen Elgin Avenue, Bethel, Connecticut. Thank you for the three stories and the height. I wish that you had, um, gotten to the. Thirty per acre, twenty per acre, you know, as far as, uh. Allowable units or how, homes. But that said, I would think very carefully before, uh, you engage D P Z again, because. Um, they're, they're, they're. Just go to their website. I know that they did a job. They did the charrette and all that, and that's great. However. Um, you know, you've got a lot of, you, you covered a lot of ground there, and now what's happened is that particular plan. Didn't work out the way that you thought it would. Now's the time to get the people together. I mean, the people and the town. Not to have an outside consultant, because we know how that turned out. People change, times change, habits change. I think all of us here tonight know, have a pretty good idea about what Bethel is all about. So I would just encourage you to maybe not go back to the same trough. Um, I also think that, um. I don't, maybe I'm, I'm the only one, but there is a tsunami coming, and the longer you put this off, the more that. I, I mean, we're going, we're on a collision course with the state, basically. So the more that you can do to tweak the TOD, the better it's going to be for the residents of Bethel, in my opinion. Um, Grand Street, I just came through there today. You can't even, it, it's a bottleneck with, if another car comes the other way, because everyone's parked in front of the grand. It's a mess. So just really think carefully before you go back to the outside consultant who designed like. Providence, Rhode Island, or, you know, some, uh, you know, beach resort. I don't know. They're just not, I don't think they're the ones you need now. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else there, David?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised on, uh, zoom at this time, Madam Chair.
Okay.
There are other people here with.
We didn't have one person each in the back. Come on, John. And.
Sorry about that.
Problem. Go ahead.
John Schmucker, you're two forty.
Thank you, John.
First of all, I want to thank the commission expressly for what you did tonight, excited to go help the character of Bethel and the way Bethel's going to approach in the future. I want to make one comment tonight, I think might help the commission, and is. There is a new traffic study that's being done by the town. I'm not sure if people have seen this. And it's basically talks about the accidents in downtown. It talks about specific stretch of Greenwood Avenue. If you haven't seen it, I would encourage you to look at it. So it is a temporary, it's just come out, but this is the area that I live on, okay?
Hmm.
This is the scratch from the Sycamore Restaurant. Right to the train tracks. We don't have any statistics on this report. For the area of the central part of Bethel. So if you read it and you look through this, you will see very clearly the existing situation. During a pandemic, this half-mile section was fifty-four accidents, thirteen industries, six pedestrians in one half-mile stretch. Your master plan shows daily traffic back in twenty sixteen of fourteen thousand two hundred. Nine eleven down Main Avenue, per the developer specifically says two thousand five hundred. If you add that, it's sixteen thousand seven hundred per day, but no one accounts for it in this town. And I live on Greenwood Avenue, so I'm saying it. My wife was almost hit by a car. A week ago, when it ran up the highway, and I was almost killed in front of town hall. So I have a personal stake in this, because we walk through town every day. It doesn't account for the fact that the train stops the traffic twenty-eight times a day. There's no way you can stop that.
Yeah.
And also, I know there's a plan to revise it, but trucks, like we said tonight, they've been on Route fifty-three. So they have to come through the center of Bethel. There's huge trucks coming through Bethel every day. The point I'm making is, despite all the changes you make. I'm saying it's out of passion for the love of the town of Bethel, where I see this town going. Is there's a limit to how much more traffic you can take in downtown Bethel. Now, the consultant will come back and say, we'll do bump outs. That was the solution. Which means that there's a more bypass. They take that up and traffic comes to a halt. So as I'm walking downtown, people pass it on the left, pass on the right, and that's where you have your accidents. Those will be eliminated by bump outs all the way through this section, which will mean that traffic will come to complete halt. So when you think about the future of town, I just, let me finish.
Yes.
When you think about, this is preliminary, please a preliminary report. When you think about the future town, all I'm saying is, and I'm going to finish, like, thank everybody, what they did is, please understand. There's a limit in this infrastructure, this town, and I love it, and I love the downtown walk every day, and thank you for the work you do. That's it. Okay?
And I have a comment now for the record. Thank you.
The note on the top are from a committee we put together, don't look at this. These notes on the top and not, and those from the report.
Is this from the presentation that was done? I need more clarification on where this came from.
Uh, it came from a presentation was done in town to a bunch of public officials, went to a regional agency, went to a whole bunch of people.
Okay, so you're writing is the, is the top portion?
My notes are on the top from.
This issue.
Yes.
Okay.
This three report from the town of Bethel.
Okay.
So again, I want to state very clearly, the notes on the top are mine, based upon personal information and other friends of mine going through previous reports. They, you'll find they're very accurate. Okay? Other than that, I want to thank everybody, and thank you very much for being.
Done up.
Thank you. Okay, before the commission.
Personal damage, personal property damage only. You know, through actual accidents and victims and the others are pedestrians. Okay?
Just so the commission isn't confused and they have a better understanding of what this is. Uh, this is part of the traffic and mobility study. This is a piece of one slide from that. Last presentation that was done. Um, it is something that is being done by the professionals. Uh, a professional consultant. In fact, your traffic consultant, Hardisty in Hanover.
Hmm.
Um, also, there will also be public participation at some point. Uh, public hearings and things of that nature for further explanation of it. So again, um. As far as this information that you're receiving, it's in a draft format, it's called crash far, summary, and the comments above are from John.
Individuals, not myself.
Well, is this from you, John, or who is it from?
It's a group of people. We sat down and pulled data from it. So you can say it's from me if you prefer it.
Well, I'm just asking, so they.
A group of concerned citizens who meet regularly about preserving downtown.
Okay.
So the whole group got together, some people pulled the master plan, some of the previous master plan, same kind for your planning and zoning.
Okay.
So it's from multiple sources. I did some, others did others.
Okay.
So there's just comments, but I think you'll find they're factual. Okay?
Thank you. Okay.
I think that the commission hasn't seen it. I don't know who got it. I'm not familiar with the whole report. But it's apparently a number of people did see it, so I suggest you get a copy of it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Diane Ryan, you're, you're rep?
Diane Ryan, it's Kim Karen Ryan. Um. One question, uh, I think that Dan Carter said that they were going to be, the town was doing a, a big traffic study, right? So this is something. Additional that they just came up with, that they're concerned about, so. I would recommend that you give that to Dan, too. I don't know.
I'm not, I'm not sure who in the town got.
Dan had one, she.
Dan hasn't?
Yes, he does.
Okay, because I know he was planning on doing that, according to this.
Dan Harder has.
Yeah. Um, historic district, um, has been brought up a bunch of different times. You know, whether a house is in the historic district or not, if it's an old house, if it is, if it's. Something that you knocked down. Um, I just thought that maybe that's something you might want to take a look at, just, you know. What old houses are in town, what, you know, because we, back, if you remember, McDonald's was gonna go with.
Oh, I remember.
So.
I'm sorry, I have. There's, um. You know. There, there's a historic district.
Right.
There's certain portions of homes. And of, um, certain areas within town that are included in the National Registry of Historic Places.
Right, but there are some that are not, and that was something that was brought up. You know, at one of the last meetings.
Right.
So I, I just, you know, I, my concern is, you know, if you're going to be knocking down a lot of. Homes for these new development things, and people are apartments or whatever. We're losing, besides the four feet to three feet, we're losing the whole feeling of our town.
Right.
Um, and it's happening in a lot of places lately, it seems. Um. The other thing was architecture, you know, I, I know I've been coming to your meetings for a while. Back when, um, the building across from the municipal center was being built, or gonna, was proposed. Um, you guys didn't have any, any, um, say in the architecture. I was told it's the, um. You approved the, the concept, and then they go ahead and, you know, you have the town architect do the, um, architecture. Nobody feels that that fits in with our town. Um, and I brought that up back at that time at the public hearing. So I, I don't know how that can be melded with you all as you make decisions. Um, I know Richfield has real specific requirements. Um, you know, even in their signage, it has to be black and white, you know, because they, they don't want it gaudy. So I, I just don't know whether there's some way that you guys can, can have architecture a little more part of your purview.
Hmm.
And I, I guess the other thing, you know, I'm thankful that you made the decision to go from four to three.
Um, I know that, that was something discussed back when that.
Building across from the municipal center was, was being, um. You know. Proposed. Um. I guess that's it. I just, oh, I just wanted to also get a, if there was a possibility of getting a copy of what you had given out, everybody. That you were discussing, um, or make a copy or pick a picture of it or whatever. Um, because, yeah, I don't think that was anything from March, that particular.
That is one.
You handed out, yeah.
Which one?
This one.
The one.
No, that was from March.
It's, I'm pretty sure it was.
Two twenty-three. It, it was what was unsubmitted. It was what they discussed during the public hearing.
But you had to stop the public hearing because it wasn't in the paper, right?
We, we did it. We redid the legal notice.
Have another public hearing after that. I don't believe.
We had, we had a public hearing the end of March.
Right.
And the original documentation, it's dated to, it's dated a different date. It's dated to twenty-three something, whether I'm sorry, I can't remember the.
I don't know, but, but it, but.
You need a copy.
That'd be great. I'm just gonna do. Diane, that's fine. I'm eighty-two.
Diane.
That's.
S.
Eighty-two. At you. And, you know, it just was a little different, I thought, from what you, from what you read out loud.
No, I think this is pretty much it.
I just pulled.
But this was two fourteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because, because it was written wrong, and then you had to stop the public hearing, and I remember, you know, Peter Olson had done a big monologue, and then.
Oh.
Everybody left, and, yeah, because I did it over.
So, yeah, I was saying, when it comes to Richfield, they have a lot of historical, um. What do you call it? A register, but we don't.
But I'm wondering whether we need to do more of that. I don't know. You know, because we're gonna, we're gonna lose a whole.
It's the town that does, is it, isn't, it's, it's the individual owners that do that, isn't that true? When they register their own homes. I believe, because we, we went through this. Go many years ago, and that there was a, um, a huge cost to the owner. To do that, and that's why, uh, a lot of homeowners downtown were not doing that.
But there's a certain section supposedly that's the historic district, and I'm not sure what that is, and maybe you have an overlay that shows that. How do you make this?
Well, I think ours was more Grand Avenue. And right, so that one section right there by Greenwood.
Yeah.
Where they have all the beautiful old homes.
Yeah, but South Street, you know, next to Adway, that. You know, I don't remember seeing that, anything about that, but that went ahead, and maybe that was before I was here or something.
You know, I would suggest, Diane, what you should do is, if you can, is, is call, um, call, make an appointment. And come in and talk to me, and I'll walk you through the changes that we've done as far as regulation changes from the early two thousands. Um, I, in fact, because maybe Julie can remember, in the eighties, were you around?
No.
Did you live here in the eighties?
We did.
Eighty-six.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
All right, believe it or not, in nineteen eighty-four.
True.
Nineteen eighty-four, I believe I was on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I fought for years for them to have a town architect.
Oh, yeah.
And the town architect, I also backed to that, but also fought for what we call the Village Center Zone. And the Village Center Zone was created to take care of. Architectural issues, and to keep our Greenwood Avenue and the south, you know, our, most of our majority of streets downtown. Existing the way they are, working with single-family homeowners, so they can keep the architecture. Make upgrades and things that maybe that should be done. So, I mean, I'd, I'd love to sit down and talk with you if you watch.
Thanks.
Our director has been my main concern since I was a kid living.
Yeah, see, my background is design, okay, design is cool, so, very good, something.
Paul?
And.
Paul?
That's why, you know.
I'm in and stop.
But, I mean, it's not just between you and me. I just think the commission needs to be aware of, you know, not knocking a lot of things down and. Putting all these things up. I mean, I know that homeowner has, you know, purview or whatever, but you can decide, architecture-wise. Not having blocks, you know, so the thing on South Street is really close to the room, ugly. I have no idea what it's going to look like on Route Six now. With the four stories, with those five buildings or whatever, but.
You sound like you could be of help. Is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So it, with an interest like that, do it. Oh.
Okay. I'll make a time to sit down with you.